All right, I will call to order this meeting of the City of Urbana's City Council, Committee of the Whole. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu. Councilmember Wu.
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear, I, yes.
So Jaya, are you there?
This is Jaya, yes.
Mary Alice, are you there?
Yes.
All right, we got everybody. Now we can, now we can do the hard part. All right, so first order of business is approval of the minutes from May 27, 2025, from the Committee of the Whole on that date. Could I have a motion?
So moved?
We're, we're doing the public hearing.
Oh, we're in the public hearing. Then why, oh, that's for the Committee of the Whole, sorry. Okay, I am, I don't have that agenda in front of me, just one second. Thank you. All right. Now I'll read the, I'll read the notice, which I should have done before we did the call to order. Notice is hereby given that the proposed annual budget for the City of Urbana in the County of Champaign, State of Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026, is on file and conveniently available for public inspection on the city's website. I'm not going to read the URL, you can look it up in Google. Notice is further given that a public hearing on said proposed annual budget will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 16, 2025. Estimated revenues for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 are $78.4 million and estimated expenditures are $93.4 million. All interested persons are invited to attend in person or to watch the hearing on UP-TV or livestream the hearing at the Urbana website. Persons attending the hearing shall have the right to provide written oral comments and suggestions regarding the proposal, the proposed annual budget. So we have had the call to order, and now is time for public input at this public hearing.
Good evening. I know I've already spoken too much this evening, but this is my third meeting and I'm going home to eat. I am speaking as a resident of Urbana, as a Cunningham Township Supervisor, as the Vice Chair of the Continuum of Service Providers of the Homeless, as a Board Chair of CU Public Health. And as someone who is organized in this community and knocked on almost every single door in Urbana, I believe that this last election, the voters were extremely clear. They resoundingly supported the position, get a recommendation from the Alternative Response Task Force, and fill the vacant police positions before you hire more police officers. I believe that the budget that increases the police budget by another $847,000 is premature and should wait until we have the Alternative Response Task Force recommendation. I do appreciate the investment in alternative response, I appreciate a number of the pieces of the budget, and I appreciate all the work that goes into making a budget. But I do want to point out that $300,000 for alternative response compared to just the increase of 847,000 in police alone, when two-thirds of calls at least are nonviolent and noncriminal, according to the city's own Barry Dunn report, really asks the question, are we giving the resources where they need to be to do the work? Your proposal, the proposal before you represents a 71% increase in the police budget over six years. There is no other department that has even come close to getting that kind of increase. This comes at a time when crime is at an all-time low, but material precarity is at an all-time high, which I shared in the last meeting. I do want to also point out that I know that the grocery tax, 1% grocery tax, is, according to the financial forecast, one of the ways in which this would be paid for. It is a continuation from state to local, but the governor has suggested the local governments not increase the grocery tax, but actually give that relief to residents. But I do want to point out that the memo that supports the grocery tax is absurd. And this is why it says that it will cost $1.64 per year for the lowest-income residents. Think about that. 1% means that they would be, a person would be buying only $164 in groceries a year. So it is like a weird fuzzy math, and I want you to really think about, just use common sense, but also Google or AI, which tells you that essentially a family of four spends about $16,000 annually on groceries, and so that would come to $164 a year in just that one cent grocery tax. So I think that if we were to consider keeping the grocery tax, it really needs to address people's material needs and no other purpose, otherwise I don't think it's appropriate to continue with that grocery tax. I do look forward to discussing how we work together to address the public safety concerns in our community, and I think that, as Martell Miller has said many times, you can't police your way out of poverty. It's really important that we look at addressing poverty through real solutions that have to do with money that goes to support people and, and to support social workers and those trained in working with low-income residents who are struggling, and all residents who may be struggling with substance abuse, mental health, and other forms of precarity. And I certainly appreciate your service and your time, I know it's a difficult decision before you, and I respect the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, and you have five minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Sharon Irish, I have lived in Urbana for 45 years. I speak for myself, but I'm a volunteer with the CU Reparations Coalition, as well as some other youth development projects in town. I skimmed the first third of the budget document. The proposed budget for FY 2026 aligns with many of my priorities, and I appreciate the really hard work that you've done to get us to this point. The past and present harms to Black people in housing, education, healthcare, public safety, economic development, and cultural preservation demand acknowledgement and repair. I appreciate the proposed budgeting of $25,000 to support the creation of the Champaign County Reparations Commission for African-Americans, which, together with other government units, hopefully, will be an action-oriented effort to implement tangible and meaningful steps toward repair and healing. My recent research on racial equity in local housing indicates that disparities in homeownership between white and Black people have, of course, historical roots in persistent discrimination at every level, including policies and practices by some banks, developers, realtors, neighborhood associations, landlords, and city governments. The most recent data show that the homeownership rate in Champaign County for white people is 84%, whereas for Black people it is 6%, 6%. This ownership gap explains much of the current and growing income and wealth disparity among households in our county, because owning a home is a key way of transferring wealth from generation to generation. Further, regarding housing, as Danielle was talking about, we know how crucial safe and stable quality shelter is for children, and lack of adequate housing is linked to a long list of dire outcomes for children in terms of physical and mental health. The National League of Cities reports that in addition to higher rates of asthma and infections, quote, "homelessness is linked to developmental delays in young children," end quote. Emergency housing for families is practically nonexistent here, despite dedicated efforts of folks in the township office and nonprofit organizations. The current viciousness of the federal government makes housing our most vulnerable people even more difficult, so I applaud efforts to create and maintain housing that is truly affordable for those of no to low to moderate incomes. These efforts may include increased reasonable code enforcement and altered zoning ordinance to accommodate more well-managed multifamily housing, which I support. I encourage development of the Alternative Response Task Force, which is a big lift, given the time and energy commitments involved. Still, the public safety and well-being strategic area goals point toward the importance of broadening response options beyond police who have a different remit. That said, the budget can only be stretched so far. I urge you to prioritize broadening public safety response options, putting funds toward those options, rather than increasing the department for the police budget. I remain skeptical about implementing the community engagement team within the police department, and would encourage us to, as Danielle said, follow up with the vacant positions and the alternative response options. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Was who addressed? Paul Muth, walked over from my place in Urbana, on Illinois Street. I'll say what she said, and what she said. That's great. I'll, I could just say that, I guess. But I want to reprise a contribution I made to a prior discussion of additional police staffing, and it was I actually played an NPR report to the microphone on what Minneapolis was doing, with an emphasis on crisis intervention, the alternative response models, and, and actually putting a lot of that and not having it in the police department. One of the teachings that happened at the IMC had a police guy from Dayton, I believe it was, saying that you can't put the alternative response system inside the police. It's, it's antithetical. That was Dayton Police Chief. One thing that stuck out with me, and I highlighted the second time I intervened on the previous discussion, was that they also asked for emotional support and counseling staff person. That's the only person I would like to see added to the staff department, to the police department, it seems to me. It is a difficult, stressful job, and there should be no stigma for asking for help, and maybe it would keep more people on the job with less, less time off because of, you know, problems that develop. They could also intervene with the warrior cop syndrome, which I don't know of any examples of that in Urbana. I know that through the decade, through the last decade or so, there have been a couple of instances of these macho cop types in Champaign. I can't remember their names right now, somebody here probably knows, because it was pretty amazing. Where's the clock at there? So, you know, I don't know how much discussion of that there is, and whether, how much there needs to be in Urbana. But I also wanted to highlight the, the crisis intervention program that Memphis actually had, it was exemplary program. I don't know where the training is happening for, for Champaign police and Urbana police and the Sheriff's Department, but, but they weren't getting very good advice. There was an example a while back of a deputy in the Champaign Sheriff's Department intervening, and it was lauded as some kind of exemplary act of crisis intervention. I don't remember if people recall this instance, a guy was having an emotional crisis, he was on the edge of homelessness, he was on Main Street, he wouldn't leave the street, he was wielding a knife, and the crisis intervention was drop the knife, drop the knife, drop the knife repeatedly, no other attempt to, to try to connect with this guy who was clearly... So I'm just asking that, that be taken seriously, and that not be regarded as a good example of crisis intervention. So I guess I should yield back my time. With all, the deluge of stuff that's been going on, including the incidents in, in Minnesota, it's been hard to collect my thoughts, but I appreciate any attention you can give this. Again, the takeaway is authentic alternative response and crisis intervention emphasis. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Adam Nichols, I'm a resident of Urbana, I live on McHenry Street, and I wanted to urge the City Council to not reinstate the grocery tax that we finally got relief from, from the state, and then we hear that it's delayed and it's not going to happen in 2025, and we're all disappointed. But now 2026 is just around the corner, we're being, you know, beaten down by inflation, which is not your fault, but it is something that we're dealing with, and groceries are even more expensive than what inflation shows. And the people could just use some relief, this is what your constituents want, this is how we want you to vote, and according to the budget, it brought in a million dollars, or is expected to bring in a million dollars. Last year, we brought in more than a million dollars than we spent. It was, I think, about $4 million more in surplus, which kind of brings me to my next point. This is just amazing. Last year, we actually spent $59.9 million. This budget, we want to spend, we want to propose $93.4 million. That's $33.5 million more than we spent last year. Like, what's going on? Like, where's the money going? That's $2,500 plus per household. We're not seeing our taxes go down, we're not seeing our roads be fixed. When someone calls the ambulance, they still get a, you know, several thousand-dollar bill, and it's not like that's free. So my basic question is just, where's the money going? Thank you.
Hi there, Committee Whole. My name's Ben Jossen, I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm here because I first would want to just point out that we've been sort of coming up here every budget cycle for well over a decade, pointing out the racial disparity that continues to happen in our jail system, and we continue to have sort of no metrics to evaluate our police force based on that sort of metric. I think it'd be really great if every year the city evaluated its police force based on the equity of arrests. I think that, or I saw something about the point that performance in school often leads, or poor performance in school is one of the leading indicators of criminality later in life, or at least being incarcerated later in life. I applaud the police department for, for noticing this fact. I think it would be a woeful misallocation of funds if we put any money of our education or of our city budget towards having our police educate children. They're incredibly expensive to have police officers, and they're not trained to be educators. That's simply a misallocation of, of city funds, and I can't think of a much faster way to send funds out of our city. Our police officers cost a lot of money, and many of them don't live here. I think it would be so much better if we invested in community members who have underemployment, who have needs to come and teach the students in their community. I think that we could start a program for the amount of money that we're looking at that would be way better for the kids, keep our money here, support our community, and be paying for folks who are better educated, or at least more qualified to be educators than the police. So I agree with that concern, but I don't agree with any money going to that at all. I want to point out that our police have been sort of advocating for license plate readers, I want to point out that that technology has been used to identify and chase down women who are seeking proper and appropriate healthcare for themselves in other states, that it's been used to track down folks who don't have documentation and are being chased from other states, and that surveillance technology that's being pushed for our private police department is being used to incarcerate members of our community and folks from out of state in a way that we do not want, so I applaud you all for holding that line to the best of your ability. I hope you continue to do so as the state tries to push it on us, and I think that it shows that our community is right to be skeptical of this kind of technology, and I think that it doesn't show good faith actions on our police department as they continue to push for stuff that our community has repeatedly said that it does not want. I want to talk quickly, yeah, and just say, we're already paying like $440 per person and way more than that per taxpayer for our police department, it's seen increases unlike any other part of our department, and as the Township Supervisor was saying, it's, we got as many or more calls to the Township for help, and I think it would be great if we stopped or cut funding in the police department as we look at allocating to the, to the needs that we know cause criminality and cause people to do crimes of need. And so I want as much as we can to be funding ways to get people housing, jobs, the resources that they need to be successful members of our community, instead of spending more money on our police department, which we unfortunately need to come and say please don't every year as they continue to ask for more every year, and that feels like a waste of all of our time. So, thank you very much for representing our city, and I hope you have a lovely rest of your day.
Deborah Hollenberg of Cottage Grove, South End. I didn't have much time to prepare, so I'll try and be clear with my words. The city proposes to add an estimated $1 million grocery tax to pay for the extra police officers. This grocery tax would be a huge burden for low-income residents, including myself, who are already experiencing rising food costs, which are expected to get worse. PBS News recently had an excellent article about this, I can email that if needed. 25% of Urbana residents live below the poverty line, and the median household income is only $45,000, which is nothing these days. Food stamps don't last the whole month, mine ran out halfway through last time, and I get more than most people, and every food pantry is overwhelmed with need. I've been stuck behind traffic jams on Lincoln Avenue because of the Hope Center being overrun. Times are tough and getting worse. We need to be working to ease this burden instead of taxing people more. This request is coming at a time when the city is losing critical federal funds for, among other things, the housing support, as Danielle wonderfully outlined. These cuts are expected in other essential community programs, and I assume the city is planning to subsidize those should that happen. One of the things that I do love most about Urbana in the 11 years I've been here is how well we do care for our people by funding programs that address these essential needs. As living expenses continue to rise and needs increase, we must respond by expanding these programs wherever possible. Chief Boone has noted that the Urbana Police Department has a serious retention problem. There's currently eight budgeted but unfilled positions, four of which were added last year. The city repeatedly adds to the department budget to hire officers and incentivize employment, but clearly the problem persists, and repeating this failed strategy is a big mistake. Instead, we should implement the alternative response model that our community council has proposed previously to reduce the burden on our officers and make the job more appealing to applicants. Other cities that have implemented these programs outside of police have been wildly successful. We are asking you to do the job we elected you to do and uphold the promises you made and what we have made clear that we want in our community. We voted you into your seat, and we can replace you. This proposed budget aims to bring back a previously canceled tax to fund the police department expansion. There are existing funds already available to fill these officer positions, and the department has not used these funds. Why do we need to give them more? Our community is probably going to see cuts to federal funding. Continually adding to the police budget has not resolved the officer retention issue. Instead of raising our taxes to repeat a failed strategy, we need to adopt the alternative response model that the community has been demanding for years. What is the holdup? Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Sean Womack, I live in Urbana. I'm currently a member on the Community Development Commission, recently appointed. I am here in my personal capacity, however. I am here to give my support for the grocery tax proposal with some added clarities and changes. As the previous person mentioned, the targeting of the, like, the, the low-income people in our communities, it does add burden onto them, so if we generate revenue from this tax, I would like to see that kind of alleviated in other benefits such as like SNAP, and I am unfamiliar with them because I do not use them, but any, any alleviation that we can give there to kind of shift that burden would be great. But we, in recent weeks, I've learned of potential, any loss to funding that we could face as a, as our city, since we have a pretty big target on our back, based on our location, our university, and us being a sanctuary city. I would also like to see a portion of this tax possibly going towards targeting and reinforcing areas and people of the city that are in dire need of help, and mainly our homeless population, supporting them from the ground up instead of the top-down, as opposed in like police budgets and addressing problems once they arise, instead of treating things before they can become a problem. All of this could have meaningful impact and equity and lasting success in our community and these people's lives. And helping our neighbor out, and when they fall into crises, and getting, and helping them get back on their feet would not just benefit them, but all of us. So, thank you for all that you guys do, so.
Hi, I'm Sandra Otten, and my husband and I own Elliott Counseling Group, was the 2001 Philo Road. So we made a big investment right before the pandemic hit. We had an office already in Champaign, but we wanted to expand into Urbana, and we put a lot of money into an office there. And then the pandemic hit, and we didn't need two offices anymore, but I decided to stay in Urbana despite the fact that I had a lot of naysayers thinking that that's a dangerous part of Urbana to be in. I like to say it's not dangerous for me, it's usually dangerous for young Black men, that's who it's dangerous for, and it's partly because they need services, and they need code enforcement there, there's a lot of things that that corner of Urbana needs, but a police substation is not one of them. It is not. They need social workers, they need jobs, they need, they need sidewalks, they need trash cans, which seems basic, but seriously, there is no, you know, they, they overflow our trash can because they don't have a place to bring their trash, or whatever. We put out a, you know, a basketball hoop, and it gets used, because there's, even just walking to the closest park is a hike, especially for little kids. It would be criminal, in my opinion, to add three more cops when we have yet to fund our alternative response team and follow the guidelines that the citizens want. This is Urbana, we're a special place that like, as, as you heard if you were at Danielle's presentation, an unparalleled level of care here in Urbana, and it's why I live here, and I love it here, and I invest here, and I do not want our jails filled, I want services. I do want code enforcement down on that end of town, I want to make sure that we're asking the landlords to step up, I'm a landlord myself, I know it's not easy to pay the taxes we have to pay here, it isn't. It isn't easy to make every, all the ends meet at the end of the month. But I know we can do it, and I want to give our new mayor a chance to do it without draining our resources. I feel like we've already done it with the fire station down there, that we spent way too much money on that fire station, we did not need to do that, we could have easily remodeled, we chose not to, I don't understand it, but it's water under the bridge, but I'm not going to sit by and not say something while you're thinking about giving, what, we've had 71% increase in six years in the police force? Hello, people, what? No. All right, that's it, I'll get off my soapbox, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lila Leopold, I'm a resident of Ward 4 in Urbana, and just chiming in here with other folks in the room, that given that the vast majority of police calls are for nonviolent or noncriminal instances, I urge the council to clarify and reconsider how and when and why included in this year's proposed budget is such significant funding increases for new police officers. When just last year, the police department was given funding to hire up to eight new positions, including a social worker, yet it still seems none of these positions have been filled. So how can we really know what's needed without, at the very least, seeing what things might look like with those positions in place? And why are there no solid plans for the new substation in place to justify its quite large asking price? There haven't really been any details put forward. There haven't really been any details put forward, whereas last week, the firefighters offered direct and transparent evidence of the way they, the ways they try to save costs in their work, and also responded with openness to questions about alternative response models and how they might help free firefighters up to do the work for which they're uniquely trained. So instead, in the spirit of making things a bit better for everyone, we could avoid letting massive amounts of work already undertaken by the council and local partners on initiatives such as the Alternative Response Task Force from going to waste. The task force has been years in the making and has the potential to not only free up police officers to serve their community in the ways most aligned with their training, but also to offer services to alleviate the full spectrum of hardships people in Urbana are facing. The opportunity to participate in a police ta, a police force somewhere that has an alternative response model in place would offer all police workers the chance to be at the forefront of policing models in this country, and this seems like something worth trying, especially given the current retention rates, if I'm correct. This could be a really impactful and meaningful part of the extended working environment Urbana can offer police workers in a way that enriches their career and community lives. And in the spirit, again, of making things a bit better for everyone, this could also mean, at the very least, steering way far away from the direct tangible, unignorable cruelty of a food tax. I hope this council steadfastly stands by its previous decision to repeal an increased food tax. A food tax is a direct daily hit on the people of Urbana that will be felt by all, and especially those already hard off. It is cruel to put people in a position of having to decide which essential food items they can go without for any reason. So I'm asking, what is the reason in this case? And is it worth inciting agony in day-to-day lives of people in Urbana by adding unwarranted strain into those decisions? So if we want to give our police force the full set of tools to contribute to community safety, this doesn't have to mean a blank check. It means making sure the resources to care for our most vulnerable, vulnerable, excuse me, are there, and that all of the work that has already gone into repairing this task force is, again, not lost. So we do have a chance here, and I, I, I hope the police can see this as an opportunity to offer new workers a chance to be a member of a team that can, again, explore the most innovative and proven ways to save time and money so they can focus on their craft. This is a process every branch of Urbana is having to do. Figure out funding, figure out how to work, do more with less. And it's time that we signal to the police department, with all due respect, that asking them to do this work along with everyone else is simply not a reprimand, but it's a respectful plea to fully participate in Urbana governance, in which no one entity should be given a blank check. We need less investment in paths to prisons and more investment in keeping communities intact. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Ward Four in Urbana. I'm a licensed social worker, and once again, I'm up here because I'm ashamed of the city council's practices. I was here last year advocating for the same changes to prevent the city from wasteful spending on its ineffective and harmful police force. I want to thank those of you that chose to care for your constituents last year and hear us out. I want to give extra sent thanks to those of you wearing masks and protecting immunocompromised members of your community. But once again, this council is dragging us out on these fine Monday nights to once again advocate for the right to be heard and to remind you to care for your community. Why is it that you immediately decide that resources should go to expansion of police forces in our community time and time again? Have the seven of you learned nothing in these years of public service about what our community wants, what it needs, and what it means to be effective? I could point out that over 90% of police calls across the nation are for nonviolent events, so why would we bring a gun to that situation? But I just don't think you would listen. I could point out that police only managed to avoid killing a civilian one day this entire year, but I don't think you would listen. I could point out that police only solve 10% of violent crimes, but I don't think you would listen. I could point out that increasing police presence and funding has no impact on crime rates, and in fact, only leads to increased uses of force, but I don't think you would listen. So this is what I ask instead. If you truly care about your communities, reflect deliberately and critically. Think about your values and how you see police used in our community. Police are called out to respond to crimes in progress. That means they inherently cannot prevent them, and all research supports this. Now think, why do people commit crime? Predominantly, they are doing it to try to get their needs met. No one goes out and sells drugs because it's their only, it's the best thing that they can do with their lives. They're doing it because it's their only option. They're trying to do what they can to survive, to get money, food, shelter, and hopefully get a life in this cruel world. Now tell me how increased policing is going to prevent these desperate people from trying to get their needs met. You know it won't work. I know it won't work. The whole city knows increasing police budgets won't work. But we all know it can. We all know that increasing social services can help people thrive. I implore you to literally take any alternative to increasing police budget. You can plant a free orchard in any of our parks to offer free food to people living in poverty. You can add rent controls and subsidies to prevent parasitic landlords from taking advantage of people with nowhere else to live. You can have social workers show up to the 70% of calls in our community that don't require someone with a gun. Hell, buy a herd of sheep. That's a better option than increasing police funding. Are we going to be back here in 10 years arguing for the same thing over and over, trying to stop you from raising the bloated police budget? Or are we going to buckle down and just fucking prevent it?
Hi, my name is Kate Cruzwick. I don't have much to say, but I just want to come up here and add my voice and say I also don't support increasing the police budget. As people have said, we've been here year after year overwhelmingly. This community has again and again asked you not to increase the police budget, especially by the amounts that you have. And it's, it's quite disappointing that you guys haven't been listening. So I hope this year you actually take the time and listen to what everyone is saying over here and instead direct those funds toward needing more social services, anything, like, there are a lot of people in need in this community, and, and increasing the police budget is not going to help that at all. We need more social services, more job opportunities. We need more housing, anything but increasing the police budget. So, yeah, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Addison Gray. I'm a resident of Urbana. I was born here. I grew up here. I love it here. I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, which I bring up because last year, after we passed our last budget, we spent a lot of time going door-to-door, in East Urbana especially, in the neighborhoods where this new substation theoretically would be serving, talking to people about what safety actually means to them. And we did that work because police was on the agenda, and we wanted to understand what these residents actually want, and not just what the police department says they need. So we listened, right? Not in a meeting room or in, like, a badly advertised public forum that requires people to give up hours of precious time, but on their porches, in their yards, walking around their neighborhoods. And what we heard was that people want to feel safe, right? But they don't believe that more police are going to get them there. They want safe housing, youth programs, mental health resources, spaces for their kids to play, trash cans, and above all, they want to be heard. We put together a full write-up of those conversations, including extensive quotes from residents, and if you haven't read it, I really encourage you to. It's at plcweb.org, and I'm happy to email a direct link to it to anyone who would like to read it. So with that in mind, here's what I want to say about the budget. First up, the grocery tax. I, I know that the budget memo says it's a continuation of existing revenue, that SNAP purchases are exempt, and that the burden on low-income families is small, but the reality is SNAP is being cut. Like, we can't say that it's not going to affect people who are on SNAP if we don't have SNAP. Champaign Unit Four has already said they're going to have to scale back their free breakfast and lunch program, and, and now you're telling people that they need to pay more at the grocery store so the city can fund more police? And, and even if it's just a penny on the dollar, right, that's still a regressive tax. It's a regressive tax that feels very similar to the public safety sales tax that Champaign County voters as a whole rejected last November. It's a regressive tax that not only the lowest, that not only the lowest-income people, but also the most overpleased are going to be forced to bear the burden of paying for their own policing. I just, I don't support using that money to pay for more policing. If we're going to implement a grocery tax, it should not be for more policing. Second, more patrol officers. We've now had more than a year of promises about the Alternative Response Task Force. It is something that was budgeted for, that was promised to us, and not a single meeting has happened, right? I get things move slowly in government, but are we really considering more police officers when we haven't had a single meeting of this Alternative Response Task Force? So this budget instead asks us to believe that hiring more patrol officers will somehow free up time for these community engagement officers, but that's, that's not how it works, right? We're just expanding traditional policing under a different name. These community engagement team positions remain unfilled because the patrol is understaffed. So we're saying that maybe we need to hire more patrol officers so that maybe someday these community roles can be used. That's, that's not a new model. That's just more police. Now, I'll say to Chief Boone's credit, right, he's said multiple times that too much is placed on the police, especially around domestic violence. He's talked about the need for a family justice center where survivors can get help without having to go to a police station. He said the current model doesn't work, and he's right. But instead of building that vision, this budget throws nearly a million new tax dollars a year into patrol and supervisory positions. We could use that money to fund housing support for survivors, community-based violent intervention, youth services, things that actually get to the root causes. But instead, we're being told that more officers will somehow build trust. Hiring more cops after the public repeatedly asks you not to does not build trust. This budget also doesn't explicitly fund new surveillance technology, but we know that this is what the cops keep asking for. They've pushed for automatic license plate readers and additionally, new technology like automated social media monitoring, while saying that you want to build relationships with the community. Last year, Urbana Police manually scraped social media to identify Palestine solidarity protesters and helped bring some of the harshest charges in the country down on them. These are charges that were denounced by the ACLU. And now we want to automate that process? Uh-uh, no. Surveillance technology like this does not build community trust. It suppresses dissent. That's unacceptable, and that's why I also want to say that, in case I don't get a chance to say it later on, I fully support the ordinance requiring city council approval for any new surveillance tech. So, that's my time. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Galen Seldman. I'm an Urbana resident. I'm also against spending money, more money on the police. Surveillance systems are being misused by people outside our community already. As reported recently, the licensed police reader data has been stolen and used by a Texas prosecutor from Illinois. This could be used to mis, misused, to target trans people, people seeking abortions, immigrants, or even really just anyone else. We live in a world of data, and every bit of data right now is being collected and used by people like the GOP mega donor Peter Thiel and his company Palantir, the Israeli surveillance company Celebrite, to target people in our community already. And it will be misused by ICE and DHS to kidnap and enslave our neighbors, as we've seen happening already in other communities around us. Since Urbana seems to have some cash-burning hole in our pockets, I made a little list of some things that we could do instead with that money. I don't expect that these will all be immediately actionable, but maybe it can help us think a little bit more creatively. So first, a real crisis response team with real health professionals, like the theoretical Crisis Response Task Force. We could send this money to our school systems. It's always a good thing to invest in our next generation. We can invest in housing directly. This could be things like grants for building repairs or for first-time and first-generation homeowners. We could use this money to reexamine our housing laws and zoning laws. Single-family, single-use housing with, with large setbacks is restrictive and prevents building larger housing structures to help drive costs down. We could use the money to directly help the poorest people in our community, like Champaign failed to support the Stride Shelter last year, so there's a gap that we could be meeting here. We can cut sales taxes. They're, as mentioned already, regressive. They directly impact the poorest people in our community the most, the poorest families We could buy and forgive medical debt for people in Urbana. It's expensive to, to try and go to the hospital and stay alive, and we could make that easier as a community. We could invest more in MTD. I love the buses. I use the buses all the time. We could add more routes or find other ways to reduce wait times. We could start a community bike program and add lanes and other ways for people to go around the community without depending entirely on cars, and we can expand our community parks programs. So these are some of the ideas. Some of them have already been mentioned by our neighbors, and maybe we can get some of these creative ideas going. Thanks.
Janice Walker, Urbana. I will be reading a letter from one of my coworkers who is out tonight, sick. Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Tammy Little, and I'm the Transitional Housing Coordinator with First Followers. I want to discuss the Silver and Walter area, the same area that Chief Boone discussed cleaning up in 2023, and here we are in 2025 with the same issues. The issues that I will raise are things that need resources from the city budget to address. In 2023, I was part of the TBRA Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Pilot Program in collaboration with the RPC. There were two of our clients that were placed in the housing complex then called SBRM. We went through the application and approval for the TBRA program, and both tenants started their tenancy in December of 2023. Both tenants experienced neglect from issues pertaining to their individual units. Not only did the name change to Havenstone, but there were at least three managers during the first year. Also, the property is owned and managed from Brooklyn, New York. One of the tenants never had a key to the mailbox, which should have been an easy fix. However, it was not. The lease was almost up when finally a key was provided. The other tenant experienced an electrical fire in her unit, and despite the urgency to get this client out of the unit due to health concerns, it took months to finally move her to another unit. It took RPC case manager Tammy Ward to threaten stop payment before this client was moved to another unit. She had water coming through the ceiling and a lack of electricity. I reached out to several agencies to be advised how to move forward. I was advised that both had to request an inspection from the city. Both these clients were advised to submit a complaint to the city to have someone to come out and inspect the apartment, to get the landlord to comply in providing a clean inhabitable unit in lieu of rent. Excuse me. However, we all know that this is a process and weeks and months went by, and the landlord was never motivated to even reply to an email. Attempts to call them to the number on file were never answered by anyone. How can anyone attempt to resolve any landlord-tenant dispute when the landlord cannot be located, does not answer calls and/or emails? The issue here is that this property that is supposed to house individual has multiple violations, and some of the units are deemed inhabitable. How long do these individuals, who pay almost $900 in rent, have to suffer and live in deplorable conditions that, in my personal opinion, were not fit for an animal? This is a community issue. It should be addressed and hold these out-of-state landlords accountable. These individuals are human beings, not animals, and should be treated as such. No one pays rent. No one who pays rent should experience living in a unit that is uninhabitable. According to one source, one issue is the abject failure of some landlords to maintain and manage their apartment properties. Some property conditions have gotten much worse in the last couple of years, to the point where buildings are partially occupied or have been determined unfit for human point where buildings are partially occupied or have been determined unfit for human occupancy. That's from Riser 2025. Riser 2025 also stated a significant number of multifamily properties in that area also have transitioned away from local ownership. It's much harder to hold an LLC with thousands of units around the country accountable. Our current enforcement tools, such as the Rental Registration and Inspection Program or the Aggravated Nuisance Ordinance, are no longer adequate to deal with the level of neglect and rapid deterioration we're seeing. This trend isn't unique to Urbana, but it must be addressed for the health and safety of the community. I am urging city council to move forward to hold these out-of-state landlords accountable and do not have a place in our community. I urge the city council to allocate funds to revamp this much-needed neighborhood. Thank you.[663.87][663.87](APPLAUSE)
Hello, I'm James Kilgore from First Followers and a resident of Urbana. A budget, a budget is a moral document, right? It's a statement of your values. And as much as I appreciate the seriousness that the city council is devoting to the budget, to me, the two issues that the budget needs to put front and center, which are not mentioned explicitly there, is poverty and racism. And unless we're included, unless we're using those issues to frame the budget, we're not really going to get at the core of the problems that are, that are there. And I mean, people that have come before me have listed all those problems and listed all the, all the needed solutions, but somehow it just, it ends up being a laundry list if we don't actually put them into a bigger context. So I want to, I also want to make a point that I know that people have been coming here for quite a bit of, quite a number of years talking about police. And people say that, that they're not being heard, but they are being heard because if we go back to 2023, when Chief Boone first came to town, his first proposal was that we have 15 new police officers. And people have been fighting and pushing back against that since 2023, and I think the city council, and I think Chief Boone, has listened to that. And yes, there's still a desire to have three more officers, and a lot of people have pointed out that that's probably not the best use of city funds, but we have made some progress. We have gotten the ear of the, of the council, council and the decision-makers on, on that issue. But nonetheless, the budget needs to recognize that Urbana has a poverty rate of 24%. That is twice the poverty rate of the state of Illinois, more than twice the poverty rate of the US nationally. I don't think people think of Urbana as a poor city, but if we, if we listen to the, to the housing, to the home owning ratios that Sharon Irish put forward about, in relation to reparations, 85% of white people have, are homeowners and 6% of black people are homeowners. Obviously, there's a huge discrepancy there that, that a budget should be recognizing. And I don't think we, we actually have, have seen that in, in, in the budget. A couple of other things. One, I think that, as many people have said, we should be funding the alternative response before we spend more money on police. That's obvious. We've seen, we've seen many people talk about alternative response models. We've looked at alternative response models in other jurisdictions, and we've seen all the possibilities. So why isn't it, why isn't it moving here? It needs, it needs to move. I also, I think that Urbana should be going on an anti-poverty campaign, an anti-incarceration campaign. That should be the, a feature of, of what Urbana does as a city. And the last thing I want to say is that one of the, one of the, the issues that people have not raised here is the issue that First Followers deals with, and that is reentry for people coming home from prison. So we have had no funds for the last three months to, to provide people who are coming home from prison. We've had no money for rental assistance. We've had no money for clothing. We've had no money to help people get cell phones. People coming home from prison, they have nothing. They have nothing. We've been able to, with funding, provide them with what they need to get on their feet, but in the last three months, we haven't had anything. I'm hoping that this budget will find some money for reentry and, and, and so we can be able to provide services with all the effectiveness of the, of the Cunningham Township. Thank you.[972.85][972.85](APPLAUSE)
Hello, my name is Autumn, and I'm a resident of Champaign, but my family works shops and visits Urbana daily. Sometimes Urbana feels more like home to me because when I first moved here, I came to Urbana. For four years, I lived a block away from these chambers, and I could see all of City Hall from my front porch, so Urbana is very much in my heart. My friends and neighbors here today have provided a lot of data about policing, so I'm going to take a moment to provide my personal experiences to put some of these concepts into context. First and foremost, I came here from Houston, a much larger city with a bigger police budget. Texas may rank low in funding for education and social services, but policing is well-funded, so much so that the firm I worked for was a long-term consultant for the sheriff's office to help build trust in minority communities. So I understand what it feels like to be on that side of the room. I had the sheriff on speed dial and knew exactly how to engage with the system if I needed it, but that didn't help me when I became the victim of a crime. An unknown man began stalking me and sneaking to my home in the middle of the night to leave messages around my car and my porch. I called the police on two occasions. They came to my door to issue reports and said they would increase patrols in the area, but had nothing else to offer for my safety. Two weeks later, a man followed me to my apartment laundry facility in broad daylight and put a loaded gun in my face. In that moment, staring down the barrel of a gun, I was powerless. I didn't know what or how much he was going to take from me, or if he was going to let me live after he did. It didn't matter how many police I knew, or how many patrols they added to my neighborhood. Thankfully, all he took that day was my money, ID, and credit cards. After he ran off, it took the police more than an hour to respond, and even then, they didn't follow up to get video footage of the perpetrator using my cards at stores or surveillance footage from the area. They did nothing. They issued me another useless report. So I did my own detective work. I called my bank to get transaction timestamps and locations, and I obtained corresponding video footage from those locations. And from those videos, what do you think I saw? The man used my card first to put gas in his car. His second stop was the grocery store, where he bought many groceries. One of the most recognizable items was toilet paper, basic needs. The root cause of crime is poverty, yet the council would like to impose a grocery tax that would disproportionately affect low-income families by taxing basic necessities, pushing those struggling even further into poverty and possibly crime. I often wonder if the funding for those positions of those countless officers who offered useless responses to my calls had been allocated to preventative social programs instead, if it could have prevented that man from traumatizing me so that he could buy gasoline and groceries. More police are not going to fix the problems. Cops are reactionary. They come after the crimes are committed. They don't prevent crime from occurring, and they penalize those in poverty rather than lifting them out. So I ask the council to please reconsider these positions, fill the ones you already have open from your last budget, and focus more on preventative measures. We don't have funding for a homeless shelter, and you're asking us to pay for new police officers just to patrol around and make people feel safer, but crime doesn't work that way. When I came here and I lived a block away, I thought it would be pretty stupid for anyone to commit a crime this close to the police department, with officers regularly coming in and out. But it didn't stop two young men from coming to my front door and trying to break into my home at 3:00 AM. They were in plain sight of the police department on my front porch. We opened the door and surprised them, asking jokingly if they were our pizza delivery guy, which we weren't expecting, but they didn't know that. They were flustered and quickly left. Earlier this spring, a few friends and I had come across an intoxicated man who was roaming the local streets nude. He was clearly in need of help, but none of us were going to call the police because we knew that they didn't have the help he needed. We knew their presence would likely make it worse, both in short and long term, for this man. A social worker would have been an amazing resource. Instead, I trusted a local friend who has experience and relationships with troubled individuals and unhoused to go check on him and take him some clothes. This is what we need, a proactive, compassionate response when someone needs help with mental health, domestic issues, or substance abuse. Cops have never made me feel safer. They haven't even properly dealt with investigating or seeking justice in violence crimes against me. I once again ask this council to reconsider the proposed food tax on the most vulnerable in our community and not turn around and fund reactionary policing of the poor who paid for it. Please fund preventative programs before throwing money, throwing more money at policing. Thank you.[1278.88][1278.88](APPLAUSE)
Hello, my name is Jane McClintock, and I'm a resident of Urbana. And I'll be brief because I think everyone has pretty much said it before, both this evening and many evenings before, that the community would really like to see us fill those open positions that we have, that we funded last year. You know, we're excited about the social worker. We'd like to see that happen. And I know these things take time. At the same time, we're still trying to get our alternative response off the ground. We still haven't finished that report, which should give us a lot of clarity on how we can deal with our 70-ish percent of nonviolent, noncriminal calls. So I see no reason, I don't even think it would be practical to think that we could fill those 12 positions this year. So why would we make this controversial, unnecessary, and like irresponsible investment in four new police positions before we finish the report, before we fill the positions that we've already funded? Let's do that first and not waste any more time, or I won't waste any more of your time saying what I've already said, and I appreciate your work on all of this. And I do hope that the, as many people have said before, that the alternative response and, you know, everything that we can do together will really make the police position a more fun job, more satisfying, because as folks have said before, it's a moral injury to go to somebody who is, clearly has material needs with the only thing to offer is a punitive solution. I've, when I did my ride-along, the officer had some balls and stuff in the back of the car, which he was able to offer to the children, which is really nice. You know, I think every one of our officers is, can be, and should be a community engagement officer. We don't need special officers for that. That's every patrol officer. And fine, we can have this experiment, you want to do it, but that should be every one of our officers, and they should be working hand-in-hand with the social workers, with the organizations in the community to provide those proactive solutions so that they can walk into work every day knowing that they're providing long-term solutions, not knocking people down. Also, I think the grocery tax is a bad idea because, yeah, people aren't going to have, we can't count on food stamps with this federal administration, and they run out. And what about those middle-income people? Those are the people squeezed the most on health insurance. They're squeezed in every direction. And so a food tax? Please, let's not do that. The governor had a good reason to get rid of that. So appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.[1451.23][1451.23](APPLAUSE)
Hello, I'm Carmen Blueby. I live in Ward 2. I want to offer a maybe controversial perspective and thank the officers for being here. It's often a thankless job, and this seems like a, a community where it's even less thankless. But I also see a really huge need for, you know, repairing relationships with community members, and I hope the officers will listen to their constituents. And I have to offer that, that those here have spent more than half the time during the public comment session on their smartphones, and that speaks volumes to me, to be honest. And I hope that, I hope that you'll lower your defenses and open your hearts and, and take the perspective of your constituents seriously and embrace the opportunity to repair a clearly fractured relationship with the community through the Alternative Response Task Force. And also, I, I haven't had a chance to read the 300-page budget document yet, but I hope this grocery tax, tax is a joke. It is surely tone-deaf at this moment in history. I hope you reconsider that promptly. Thank you.[1528.04][1528.04](APPLAUSE)
Good evening. My name is Nicole Massey, and I live in Urbana, right across from the Silver area. That is a little bit of a problem. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I thought about it, and I might have a couple of things to add. First, the grocery tax, at that time, really not a good idea. If we want to get more income, maybe we should look at the landlords that rent to our tenants here and then disappear. So we have an ordinance. Maybe we can work something out. The landlords run away, by the way, with the security deposits. So if a tenant pays about $800, and if they have about 100 tenants, bigger complexes, they take that money with them. And it is a fairly difficult legal process when we pay for the relocation to actually get money back from those landlords that are somewhere in New York, Brooklyn, and we cannot even find them. The tenants have no possibility in the legal process without an attorney to actually get damages for their flooded houses, for the property that they lose, all of that. So maybe looking into holding the landlords more accountable to get more money in. But that, at this current time, with the SNAPs benefits probably being reduced, adding a grocery tax will not help. So now speaking about the Silver Baba area. I heard a lot of comments today, and the question that came up, why does it have to be an either-or? Why can we not include the police work plus preventative work? I'm not an expert. I don't know how many police officers you need. I, I trust that there is, is a thought behind it. But when I think about that Silver area, having another police station there does have some benefits. There are crimes being committed, and people are in danger. And when I work with that community, and if I have to go see people that I work with, I also want to be safe. The people there should be safe. I walk my dogs there very much, very often, just to establish connections, and it's not always a good feeling. So we need, on the one hand, the police to enforce the law. This is the job of the police. The police should also create trust in the community, so if a crime is committed, that people reach out to the police. This is a lot of work, and it requires time. On the other spectrum, we also have to invest in this community, and that means resources, primarily housing, and more financial security. We need to check, does everybody get their benefits? So we have to do it all together. The Alternative Response Team is a good idea, but if I think about a domestic violence situation, we cannot send a social worker there. This is a situation that can go really bad in a couple of seconds, and people can lose their life. And I don't want to see a police report where a social worker gets seriously hurt, and at the end, we have the Alternative Response Team plus the police that adds more people, a lot more people can get hurt. So I want to really talk about collaborating with each other, putting resources together, and the police is a group that has to be part of it. And if more police is, is needed, then we also have to invest more in resources. We can only do it together. So this is what I have learned in my time. We need more people in the boat and maybe also address a different kind of policing with the community support, with the community trust, but also fighting the crime that is going on in a specific area, so people can be safe there. And I have one minute and five seconds left. This is a surprise, so have a good evening, and I, I trust that you come to a good conclusion with the budget, which is not an easy decision.[1783.13][1783.13](APPLAUSE)
My name is Brian Maxwell. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm going to pretty much say what a lot of people are already coming here tonight to say is that I think that the... say is that I think that the, this budget could allocate resources better away from the proposed, I don't know if it's $600,000 or $800,000 at this point, towards the police budget. It seems like there's one of two ways that the council can go at this point, and I hope either of them are chosen over allocating more money towards policing. I'm honestly in favor of keeping the grocery tax if it's put towards services that actually help people, that are going to be affected the most by that grocery tax. One of the council members sent a really great list of services that could be funded in this community in lieu of more policing. You know, grants the First Followers for reentry, access to 30-day drug and alcohol treatment programs, relocating families of suffering domestic violence, youth internships, the alternative response model. You know, that, that is something that would be a win-win, where you're taking responsibilities off the police department and also putting more social workers in the community. Seems like a no-brainer, and it's done for a lower cost, so it seems like a no-brainer. Or just getting rid of the, the grocery tax, it doesn't seem like a great time to be making people's food more expensive. And I'm mostly against the, the idea of a, a food tax in service of, mostly in service of increasing police funding. It feels like it's continuing along this trend that we have in the federal government, state government, local government, of making people's basic needs, food, healthcare, housing, more expensive, more out of reach in service of increasing militarization of our communities, increasing surveillance, increasing technologies to surveil our communities, punitive solutions, incarceration. So I hope that the council comes to a different conclusion as far as what to spend the grocery tax on, or whether to implement it at all. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Gwyneth Crepsio. I'm a resident of Ward 2. I am showing up tonight both as a part of it and on behalf of the folks that are disabled and experiencing, both in body and in mind, are needing our support. I, I live as a, I'm a caregiver, a support person. These are the people that I work for and with, the people that I love and are in my family and in my friendships, and, and just are a part of my community. And I feel the need to, to speak, in part because it is often, it's, these are very inaccessible settings in which to speak. And so I hope that whatever I have to say lives up to the, to the trust that those people put in me. Front and foremost in my mind is that, depending on what statistics you look at, a third to a half of the people that are killed by police have some form of disability. And I think that's really important to consider when you're trying to figure out what to do with, with our money that we're trusting you to make good decisions with on our behalf. I personally know that the, the folks that are mentally ill or physically ill find themselves unable to exist in public because they are afraid that the police will be called on them, and they will be forcibly incarcerated or institutionalized or harmed right there in the streets. And that's untenable. I operate with these folks every day. They are not a harm to me. They are more often a harm to themselves than they are to anybody else, and they deserve our kindness and our respect. And honestly, most people forget that they are so close to being one of those people as opposed to being the person that would be harmed by them. And so I would love for you to remember that we are all human people with very subtle balances of hormones and chemicals and matter in our bodies that would make us likely to be in public in a way that could have the police called on us at any given time, both in that we're a few bad months away from experiencing homelessness, experiencing a mental break, going through an injury or an illness. And so when we're in service to those folks, we're in service to ourselves, to our future selves, to our children, both as their children and as they grow up, and making a community in which those folks can exist safely among us and not just tucked away at home where they have to spend the majority of their time dealing with very faulty, insufficient public services and the amount of paperwork and the amount of dismissal and, and just common like grudgery that they have to put up with in addition to whatever they might be experiencing in their minds and bodies. Let's do everything that we can to make their lives easier at home and in public and be with them, because they're not, we, we speak about them like they're an other and like they're a separate population from us, but they are us. They, they are in this room with us right now. They are friends and families, and so if we could do everything we can to create easeful, accessible services that are not terrifying to them, that would be greatly appreciated. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and, and please keep those folks and keep yourselves and, and those issues in mind when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the Committee of the Whole? This is the public hearing. We do have letters that we have received, but we're going to address those in the public comment for the City Council, or the Committee of the Whole meeting, so we'll, we'll get to them. Seeing no other public comment, that is the last item on the public hearing's agenda, so we are adjourned.